Saturday night, live? Somebody tell me, are we ready to go? All right, good evening, Newport Beach. This is our planning commission for June 18th, 2020, a regular meeting. And we have a series of discussion items and hearings tonight. So we will begin in a moment. Let's do the pledge allegiance. Lee, you haven't been here in a bit. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Roll call, please.
All commissioners are present, with the exception of Commissioner Rosen, who is excused this evening.
All right, thank you. Public comments. This is a time when the public can call in or be live in the conference room across the way and discuss for three minutes items that are not on the agenda tonight, but are interested, interesting to them. And hopefully, every time I say this, they're going to compliment the planning commission and staff. All right, let's go. Are we taking calls yet, or just? I like it when I can see them. I can't see the podium.
Yeah, Chair Kitting, members of the commission, this is Jim Mosher in the community room.
Hi, Jim.
Hi. Since you don't normally invite comment on it, it is actually an agenda item, item seven, the director's report. I just wanted to say that when that item comes up towards the end of the meeting, I hope that we will here tonight and update on the status of the city's housing element update effort. I notice it's still on the, a meeting of the advisory committee is still on the tentative agenda, scheduled for July 1st, but that has been often canceled and rescheduled. And I had heard at some point, we were told that the housing plan had to be far enough along that we could initiate or begin a environmental impact report in August, in October, I mean. And since this started, the months have been ticking away. October is still October, so we have very little time to do this. And I'm, I am quite curious, I hope you are too, what the status currently is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, make sure you make a note of that and bring us up to date at the end of the meeting.
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
All right. Additional public comments. Nobody calling in? I'm going to tell you the number, 949-270-8165. You can also use that for lottery numbers. All right, requests for continuances. Commissioners? Staff?
Mr. Chair, we do have one item request for continuance, item number three on the agenda for the Shell Car Wash at 1600 Jamboree. The applicant is requesting a two-week continuance, well, to July 9th, so they can do some additional outreach with the neighbors. So we will be asking the commission to continue it, date certain, to July 9th.
All right, when that comes up, should we open it and just, and then continue it, or did we just continue it?
Chair Kitting, in order to not have to renotice it when the item comes up, I would ask that you open the public hearing and then just make a motion to continue it.
Will we take comments from the public?
We would simply just take comments, if any, on the actual continuance itself, not the project. But yeah, it would be very limited in terms of that.
All right. Consent items, let's do the minutes of June 4th, 2020. Any changes, please? I didn't read any. Oh, we have some.
I'll make a motion to approve them with Mr. Mosher's edits.
I need a second on the minutes with Mr. Mosher's changes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's go. Are we doing electronic or hand signals? All right, let's vote.
The motion carries 5-0 with Secretary Lowry abstaining.
Thank you. All right, I, excuse me. Public hearing items, this is the time where we take public testimony as well as applicants. When you make comments on this item and items that follow, please try to add something new and don't just follow the person in front of you and say the same things. So with that, and you get three minutes, and always publicly state your name clearly so you can be in the records forever. Item two, Baja Sharkey's remodel, PA 2017-255. Site location, 110 and 114 McFadden Place. Staff?
There we go. Good evening, Chair and planning commissioners. I'm Liz West-Morland with the Planning Division. The application we have before us today is for the Baja Sharkey's restaurant located down in McFadden Square. This application includes a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a restaurant in conjunction with late hours and alcohol service. It also includes a coastal development permit to allow for slight intensification of this use. It includes a parking waiver, which is really a continuation of historical parking waivers to allow that to continue. There also will be an operator's license, however, this will be authorized actually through the chief of police. The project site is located in McFadden Square. There are many other restaurants in this area that include alcohol service and some do include late hours. The building itself contains two suites, the existing Baja Sharkey's restaurant. And adjacent within the same building is the former Soul Grill. There is also a onsite parking lot at the rear of the property that contains about 10 parking spaces. Under existing conditions, we have the existing Baja Sharkey's restaurant with the adjacent Soul Grill suite. Soul Grill has been vacant for about one or two years. So when given the opportunity, Baja Sharkey's has chosen to lease that space to provide additional dining area for their restaurant. There will be no physical changes to the existing Baja Sharkey's space. There will only be a door added to allow ingress and egress between the two suites. First, we'll speak to the physical changes, as these are the most notable. This is the former Soul Grill suite. The applicant is proposing to create this open-air environment. They're completely remodeling it to allow for a retractable roof and for these doors that fold back and create a very open patio environment. It's important to note the additional features that this project is going to provide. Most notably is the fire sprinkler system. So due to the combined occupancy, or the aggregate, they are required to implement a sprinkler system where there currently is none. This will provide a definite benefit for the safety of this building as well as the neighborhood. Additionally, they will be upgrading the bathroom there to make it accessible. And they will be including a accessible parking space in the rear as well. Here's an image of the proposed parking configuration. We've worked closely with Public Works and Building, and this is the best solution that we have come up with to create a safe environment. They will be able to maintain all 10 onsite parking spaces as part of this project. In order to understand the operational changes, we need to understand what the existing allowed operation is at these two suites. So again, they're two separate suites, so they have completely different use permits with different rules. So for the Sharkey's suite, the original use permit that's still in place today is from the 1980s. It's old, it's out of date, and there's barely any conditions. Additionally, it was really intended for more of a bar or nightclub-style operator. It wasn't so much intended for a business like Sharkey's, that's a full-service restaurant. So in the past, it had businesses such as Jose Murphy's or Rumpelstiltskin's, if you're familiar. Sharkey's moved in in the 1990s, used that use permit, and updated their ABC license to allow for their business. They're currently allowed, per our use permit, to operate from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. daily. They're also allowed to have live entertainment and dancing. They also have this funny little rule in there where they limit the net public area during the daytime. And this made sense when it was a nightclub, because they didn't need that space and it was easy to separate. It had a dance floor and a stage, so the delineation was easy. It also has a type 47 alcohol license, which means it's a full-service bona fide restaurant with full liquor. Briefly, the Soul Grill suite is only allowed to operate until 11:00 p.m. daily, which would be maintained as part of this project. It's more of a takeout business there, and they have a beer and wine license, a type 41. As part of this project, we will be able to create one consolidated use permit for both suites. We'll be able to modernize our conditions from the old ones in the 80s. And we will be able to match the ABC conditions to our use permit, which is one of our main goals of this project. There also will be a loss of one alcohol license, because Soul Grill took their alcohol license with them to their site on Coast Highway. So the type 47 will be expanded into that adjacent suite so that they'll have the privileges in both areas. One of the key things here is that the, one of the only items that's actually being intensified that we want to point out is the additional breakfast service that they are requesting. They'd like to serve breakfast starting at 9:00 a.m. instead of 11:00 a.m. Therefore, we have included some conditions of approval specific to that request. Additionally, Sharkey's, so the original Sharkey's space by its use permit is allowed to operate until 2:00 a.m. However, the ABC license and our proposed use permit would allow them only to operate until 1:30 a.m. sharp. Again, the new suite, the Soul suite or new Sharkey's, can only operate until 11:00 p.m. and then it is shut down. The use permit will also allow full use during the daytime, and we will continue to waive one parking space. Lastly, the applicant is also still required to continue paying their in-lu parking fees, which they've been paying for about 20 or 30 years at this point. Pointing out some notable conditions of approval here, we did have a focus on breakfast alcohol. So we have included that there is no bottomless mimosas or free refills on alcohol just to alleviate any concerns in the morning. We've also included a one-year review to allow the planning commission to take a look at this business and see how they're doing after a year, with a particular focus on breakfast alcohol. We will also require them to clean up that parking lot, as there is some storage and other ons and ends back there. However, they've already done a lot of that, because they currently have a temporary emergency use permit that was authorized in light of COVID to be able to have more outdoor dining back there. So if you did a site visit, you likely saw that they have people sitting out there. Also, they will be required to close all doors and the roof, the retractable roof, by 9:00 p.m. We will no longer allow them to have live entertainment or dancing. I do want to point out, there was a memo provided to you at your seat and also available to the public in the community room, where the applicant has requested a few changes to the conditions of approval. Staff has agreed that those conditions are appropriate. In particular, the two latter ones are simply minor changes, and the police department ourselves are okay with them. The first one relates to the alcohol service being, during the morning, from 9:00 to 11:00, only being allowed on weekends and in conjunction with the service of food. We have allowed them, through this addition to the condition, to also include several holidays. So we've marked those specific holidays. I also have a slide in case you'd like to take a look at that later. All right, so let's go through a typical day at Baja Sharkey's. So at 9:00 a.m., they'll open for breakfast. And if it's a weekend or a holiday, they can have alcohol service. Then by 9:00 p.m., they are required to close all openings and seal it off so that the noise does not escape the business. At 10:30 p.m., that new Soul Grill or new Sharkey's space, they will have the last call for alcohol. And at that point, they're going to start making sure that the occupancy at regular Sharkey's, if you will, is low enough that they can accommodate every single person that's in the Soul Grill space. Many will leave, but some may want to continue their night in the traditional Sharkey's space. By 11:00 p.m., it will be completely closed. So again, no new late hours as part of this application. And then after that's closed, maybe the employees are doing some maintenance or paperwork over there, but there'll be no public. At 1:00 a.m., last call will occur around that time at the regular Sharkey's. And by 1:30 a.m., regular Sharkey's or the original Sharkey's will be closed. No sales, service, or consumption of alcohol at that point. So in summary, this application would allow us to modernize the building and the use permit, allow us to match the use permit conditions with the alcohol beverage control license conditions. We will have the elimination of one alcohol license in McFadden Square. We will also be, per our use permit, decreasing late-night hours, where they were allowed to operate till 2:00, now it'll be 1:30 a.m. And we will be enhancing the safety features of the building, improving accessibility. And now they will be required to have an operator's license, which provides an additional tool for enforcement, should it be needed. With that in mind, staff is recommending approval of this project. The applicant is over in the community room, and he has a very brief presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. I had a question, the commissioners should get theirs together. Repeat this, tell me, on the, on the conditions, can you go through the numbers that they, which numbers they want to change? Because I didn't see that.
So number two is the most important condition that they would like to change. And so we are simply adding the allowance for alcohol breakfast service, so between 9:00 and 11:00, on not only just the weekends, Friday through Sunday, but also particular holidays that we've listed here. They have asked that we also remove the purchase of food requirement, the last part of that sentence, but we have not recommended approval of that change. The two other items are minor, and we are comfortable with those changes, for 42 and 55.
All right, on that, on that, I see Wendy is out there. Police Department had no problem adding the various holidays for breakfast, mojitos? That was a no? That's all right. All right, thank you. All right, commissioners' question, Mr. Wagon? Saw your pencil.
I had a couple, and maybe the applicant can, can ask too, but Liz, we spoke on the phone earlier this week about the potential due to the Soul area and the floor plans and the design, that it was going to be open on two sides and then on the roof. And the discussion of smoking that's potentially allowed. There's some establishments that do have open-air roofs that allow for smoking, and it's not a condition on here, so is that something we could condition that says that no smoking is allowed? And then I'll follow up after that one with a second.
Do you want to hold off and ask the applicant when they give their presentation?
I can, but I'm not sure staff would know other businesses, maybe in the city, that have open air, if smoking is allowed, if they're conditioned? And what we could potentially do up here as a commission related to that? Once, after we talk to the applicant, we can see their desire, if that was something they want to do. But what kind of, in our purview, do we have the ability to do?
So based on state law and our understanding, they would be able to have smoking there, like at other patios, open air, because there's no ceiling and there would be no walls under certain circumstances. And perhaps Ms. Summerhill can assist me, but I believe that we could condition it to prohibit smoking within that space, if you think it is appropriate.
Okay, and then the ABC has to approve these plans? And then come back to the city to, probably as a community development director, to approve the plans if ABC had any adjustments or, you know, any type of? Because there is an opening that goes to the residential side, that's on, is that Court Street?
Mm-hmm.
So that faces the residents that are right there. So does ABC look at that, or is that more of a city that looks at? Would that be us tonight looking at, does that side opening have a play for us?
So that is the one item that we really deviated from them, because this was for the old business where there's just access doors in the back, so there's no need to have it open. However, with this design, they will have openings on the Court Avenue, and so we've included the condition that they can keep that open until 9:00 p.m. if ABC okay's it, because they haven't seen the new design yet. ABC will come back to us after the application is finished on their end, and they will ask us what our conditions are, and they will ask us what we've approved, and they will consider that.
Gotcha. And then the consistency, the way the building will work from the current Sharkey's running through to the Soul area, will that be? It'll be slightly different based on the schematic that I saw, the floor plan I saw. So it won't be as protruding out into the sidewalk as, as that, correct? Do I have that right?
That's correct. They have lost some floor area due to the requirement to make the door not swing into the sidewalk, since their property line follows the building.
Got it. And then the last one I have is, I've spent some time at Sharkey's in my youth, probably to the detriment of my liver, but I've noticed in the past, they take the restaurant component in the later evening time and turn that more into, you know, standing room only. What is there, maybe they can answer that, but have there been any discussions with them in regards to the tables and chairs that do get moved to a certain area? I forget where that area is in its current status. But when they occupy this new space at Soul, will they be moving those chairs and tables into the Soul area and then allowing them to have more floor space for patronizing guests after those hours that Soul has closed? Because now they've got tables and chairs, and now are more guests going to be in the floor area of the restaurant, or the now bar, because things kind of change at night?
So regardless of the configuration of the tables and chairs, they will be required to maintain their occupancy per the use permit and the operator's license. However, we do have a condition of approval in here from the police department that requires that they maintain a certain percentage of those tables and chairs so that people can continue to eat. And that allows the police department to easily look in and be able to assess approximately what the occupancy is like and keeps that occupancy down. However, if you think it's appropriate to further condition that, to maintain more tables, you may do so, and the applicant can speak more to their process as well.
And police suggested that condition that's in there? Or would they like it higher or lower? Is that, or is that what? Wendy, maybe you could just?
This particular condition is a condition that is on the ABC license. And so what we did to limit confusion was actually mirror that exact condition to put it on our use permit as well. Part of the problem with Sharkey's is that they have a very old use permit, so many of the conditions, they had several conditions on their ABC license, which were not on anywhere and on our city permits. And so we really want to make sure that they look more like each other moving forward to limit condition violations.
So do you think it would be smart to condition that additional area? That, to prevent tables and chairs being located into there? That could prevent, you know, any type of? Because enforcement's going to be done visually, but I want to make sure that you guys have every power you can to kind of keep it what it's intended to be.
So technically, ABC, they are required to maintain a restaurant environment during bona fide meal times, because they are a type 47 license. So with that said, per ABC, those bona fide meal times do end at 9:00 p.m. roughly. So it would be up to the commission to decide if that restaurant, if you would like this restaurant to remain more of a, you know, a restaurant after those bona fide meal times, or if you are okay with it becoming more of a club atmosphere after 9:00 p.m. So if you would like it to remain more of a restaurant, I would believe that maybe we should require some sort of condition that would, maybe require that the tables and chairs don't get moved out at all, or that that percentage is higher than 50%, maybe 75%. But, because right now, I do believe they do move some of the furniture out, and it does allow for more of a standing-room-only nightclub feeling environment.
Has historically there been violations to that? Or any type of concern with PD when they do move those, or in the past years? Maybe not recent, but is?
So we share a working relationship with Sharkey's, absolutely, with their security. But occupancy, especially in the summer months, is always a concern for us. And, you know, when, in any bar environment, when occupancy, when you start having to walk around like this, assaults will go up, you know, it's just, it's inevitable. So we do like to personally maintain more of a restaurant environment if this is to be a restaurant.
Gotcha. And then one last one from your perspective on, it looks kind of like they're giving us something, but in actuality, it's not really changing much. But 1:30 is ceased to, where an existing use permit for 114 McFadden allows for operations until 2:00. The 1:30, the 2:00, that's not really changing anything, right?
That is not changing anything. In fact, they've been operating at, closing at 1:30 for at least 10 years. That's what their ABC license states. And what's more, and when we've conditioned other restaurants in the area or bars, such as the Stag Bar, their 1:30 closing hour is something that is definitely something we look at for the total environment in that area.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners' questions? All right, Ms. Kleiman? Each a do it.
Thank you. So if you could address the email that I sent you earlier about the other, there are so many restaurants and bars in the area, what their timeframes, closing hours, all of their restrictions kind of look like in comparison? I appreciate it.
Okay, so as you know, there's many other restaurants and bars in the McFadden Square and the larger area. In fact, there's four bars and there's 21 restaurants that currently have alcohol privileges, in addition to a couple of grocers. So based on data that I have, last researched from mid-2019, in terms of patios, there, the main patio that would be relevant here is Charlie's Chili, which is located just a little bit down in the actual square area, and they can operate that patio until 10:00, so it's a little bit later. There's other restaurants such as Stag, which has an opening. It's not a true patio, but they are required to close that at nighttime hours, similar to this use. There's Blue Beet that has a rooftop that can operate until midnight. So there's several other restaurants in the vicinity that have similar operating hours, and some can operate till 2:00 a.m. as well.
Great, thank you.
Curtis?
A question about the real estate. Is it one ownership for both? Is it one lease, is it a master lease, or are they going to have two separate leases?
It's one lot, one legal lot. I can't speak to whether they have two separate leases or one, but the applicant can answer that.
If, and then if they decide this expansion in the future wasn't the right move, let's say, by example, they no longer want to expand, the ownership goes and leases it out to somebody else. Just want to confirm, what, what will be the license that'll remain with the 114 address?
The 47 will stay with the licensee, since they're expanding it. And then if someone were to move into the old Soul suite, they would have to get a new use permit. This one covers both, so it's very specific to that model.
So somebody coming in would have to get started from scratch?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have several questions for the applicant, so I'll wait. All right, let's open it up to the public to see if we have any takers.
We can report ex parte communications first, please.
We're going to ex parte right now, thank you. Ms. Kleiman?
None.
None.
None for the chair?
None.
No, I only spoke with staff.
All right, that's done. Let's open the public hearing. There, I'll announce the phone number. There, I'll announce the phone number again. Area code 949. Here, it's not even on here anymore. No ring-a-ding. All right. Comments from the public in the conference room? Seeing, hearing, none? We'll close the? We have someone?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we do have the applicant's presentation.
All right, let's have that.
Community room.
Chamber Chairman and members of the commission, this is Ron and Greg Newman. Baja Sharkey's, as you know, 114 McFadden Place, Newport Beach. And?
Want me to read this?
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Hi, Greg Newman, how are you? So we put together a quick little PowerPoint just to kind of explain the concept that we're going for here. So I'm just going to read right off here. So Baja Sharkey's Seoul Room Dining and Seoul Social Experience. The new space is an extension of the current space, but with a significantly different feeling. The purpose of Seoul Room, in addition to increasing food sales and consumption, will be for guests who want a higher level of service in a more subdued and relaxed atmosphere akin to a gathering at a friend's beach house. The Sharkey side atmosphere has self-service high tables, more people standing up, eating, drinking, and socializing. The Seoul space will be a full-service, comfortable restaurant atmosphere with low tables, more conducive to eating in a cool, sophisticated coastal contemporary setting. This space will be unique compared to other restaurants in the area due to its charming open-air feel during the daytime and early evening. Yet it can be completely closed on all sides and the roof to mitigate any noise issues later at night. We feel this space will be a big hit with locals and tourists alike. And then we just, you guys had a couple renderings on your staff report, but we just added a few. So this one is, just shows you kind of the coastal contemporary decor. I mean, they all, they all kind of do. So just keep, keep going. One from the outside with the windows open. And next, that's from the Court side that you guys were mentioning. So that opens or completely closes. And if you see the transoms up top, we're not going to actually have those anymore. Those aren't going to open at all. It's going to be just glass. Next. More, more, more to go. It shows the nice, all low seating and that kind of no stand-up seating. And it shows the kind of like, kind of comfortable house, house vibe that's really popular right now. Next. Just more decor. And next. So that's the main layout. It's very casual, it's very, it's small. And you got anything to add?
No. The, we feel that what we're doing to this corner and the cleanup and the way it looks is going to help other people improve their operations. And, you know, what it takes is, is, and we're putting a lot of money into this to make it look what it, you know, what it's going to look like. This is probably the biggest list of conditions I've ever, ever done in all the years I've been in business. And the reason that, that, I mean, we can go back to just running it as Sharkey's and rent this out to someone else. But we felt that, that that corner needed a change. We're also working on the next level of what Sharkey's is going to be, which is, as you know, the whole world's changing with the virus and the distancing and everything else. So also, the operations have to change. And this is, this is what we're doing here. As far as someone mentioned about furniture, well, there isn't any way that we're going to take furniture from the inside and put it next door when we already have furniture there. You know, OK, go ahead.
One of the commissioners mentioned about the lease. We have a, we have a long, great relationship with our landlord. So we have a 30-year lease that started about five years ago. And it was the master lease on, on the whole, on the whole property. So they, they used to pay, Seoul used to pay rent to us. As far as the furniture and, you know, just because he started talking about that, we only pull, you know, around, you know, when it gets to be later and the kitchen closes and it becomes more of a social gathering atmosphere, I wouldn't call it club at all. We do, we do pull some furniture, not much at all. And I probably 25%. And that's to avoid exactly what Wendy was, was saying, which is people knocking into each other. If you have all the furniture in, it causes more problems than. We pull the furniture so people, and I'm not talking about in social distancing times. I'm talking about in normal times. So, so there's a flow of people walking around and talking to each other, and they're not bumping into each other. So I hope that answered that question.
And we don't put more people in because our capacity is 160.
Yeah, and code enforcement comes down and, and checks our count every couple of weeks. So we, we never go over our occupant load. So I think that's pretty much it for this. So you guys, whatever other questions you have, we'd be happy to answer.
All right. I have a few. Tell me about the grease trap. You're, you're increasing the dining area. Is that going to be expanded?
Well, there already was a restaurant there, so it's really. And we only have one kitchen now. There was, there was another kitchen in there that isn't going to be there.
All right. The trash area, when I walked through there, I assume staff will make you upgrade that. I see them nodding. Is that correct?
As far as the, the trash area in the back, we're going to totally redo the whole area back there when we do the restaurant. You know, we're going to repaint Sharkey's and everything to match more of the look. So that's all, all that's going to go. We're going to clean it all up when we redo the remodel.
And when you close up the windows, how do you secure it in the evening?
Those kind of, they're called a cabana, or are they called cabana doors? They slide. The kind we use, we have them in other stores. They're very precise and they slide and lock. And then you have your emergency exit on the one side. And then the, the, the door to Sharkey's will be on the other. And then the, and then the roof is a kind of a really heavy, like, I don't want to say rubber, but some, a plastic. And it closes, you know, on a remote control. And it's airtight, I mean, it's watertight. And it's got soundproofing in it. So it, it's pretty much it.
And there isn't any live entertainment or anything, so it's not going to be loud.
Couldn't hear that.
Oh, he was saying that we don't have live entertainment, so it's not going to be super loud.
All right. Last, last one, and I think you referred to it. Will the original Sharkey elevation be upgraded to match this streamlined look?
We just remodeled that store. We did a major remodel and opened the whole front. We had to put in all-new steel. And we just, I think that was, it hasn't even been five years. It's brand, it's, it's brand spanking new in there. And we want this to be, to be different. If you go into Sharkey's, it's, 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 it's a newer, it's one of our newer stores. I mean, we've had it for, since 97? Yeah. Or 90, 96. But, but it's, yeah, it's been newly remodeled.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners? Ms. Kleiman?
I'm just kind of going back to the earlier discussion or the question about bar versus club atmosphere. And I just want to get a better understanding of what the intention is here. I mean, it seems like before, currently, there is a more of a club atmosphere. After a certain hour, they're allowed to have live music, et cetera. So we're removing that ability. But it seems like we're taking a small restaurant and turning it into a really big bar. But I just want to understand better from the applicant themselves.
Well, we, we took this area over with the intent of having something during the day and then the early evening. That's why we, from the get-go, have only said we want it to be open till 11:00. Bars don't close at 11:00. So all we're doing is really adding an element on that locals and tourists can enjoy during the day, kind of what I described in, in, in the PowerPoint. Sharkey's has always been a social gathering place. You know, we originally could only have Fridays and Saturdays until 1:30. And then we did a really good job over the course of, you know, years and years and years. And was it Sergeant Frizzell? Saw that we did a great job. And then he extended us to 1:30 every night. We don't, it's not a club, but it's definitely a place where people come, eat, you know, eat, have lunch, have happy hour, eat, watch sports. And then there, there's a social gathering scene after 10:00.
Yeah, and I, I just want to mention, if you look at this list of conditions, we gave up a lot. We gave up dancing. We gave up entertainment. If this doesn't get approved, we're still going to have all that. The other side that we want to add doesn't have any of that. It's strictly a place where you're going to eat and, and you're going to be out of there before 11:00. So what we've done with the city, and it was the city's idea to consolidate everything and put it all together. But all we're getting for everything that we're doing is being able to have the, we already have the restaurant next door, but we'll be able to have a liquor license. Otherwise, if it doesn't get approved, we'll go back to what we were and we'll lease it out to someone else, I guess. But, yeah, go ahead.
But Commissioner, you were mentioning that it's going to be one big bar. I mean, we do a tremendous food business at Sharkey's. I mean, I don't know if you guys have ever been down there. Some of you said you have. But we're, you know, we're a restaurant and we have a bar. But we're not like one of these places down here that doesn't try to sell food. We've always, we've been in business since 1993, father and son. We've always, our main focus has always been food first. You know, I mean, we, we spend a tremendous amount of time on our, we've got five different menus at five different concepts. And so we're, we're very serious about food. But, you know, to make money in this day and age, you got to do both. And, and you can't just survive on, on food business. You got to do food business and you need to do drink business in order to make profit. You know, so the late night is, is important, but the daytime's important. The lunch is important. It's all important to have a well-rounded, profitable operation.
Any other? Oh, Lee?
Yeah. You know, a live entertainment and dancing, you know, use permit in Newport is, is not an easy thing and few and far between. So just out of curiosity, so from your business up to date, up to date now, has that been a big draw in your business? It just seems like with that being not as of a, not that much of a wide use in Newport, that, that giving that up is, is, is a, is a big give. And it just, has that been a big attraction of Sharkey's over the past?
So, and I've discussed this with, with Wendy on several occasions. And after 10:00 at night at, at Sharkey's currently, we, we pre-programmed the music because we want a very specific type of music that's fun, that's energetic, but that's not too serious and where people, it doesn't cause too many problems. We pre-programmed the music every day. And if, and if it's not working, we'll go in and change the music a little bit and jump back and change a couple of songs. But we don't, we're not trying to create that environment. We're trying to create a social gathering environment with great quality locals and tourists. And we don't, we don't need bands and DJs because it's just a fun place to be and people enjoy. And they can talk and it's not, you know, what do you want? You want to add anything? Yeah, I mean, so, so, and we're willing to give this, this stuff up because we want to create a better operation that's more diverse. And that's why we're doing this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Curtis?
So looking at the renderings, I don't see a hostess stand. How does, how does it work? Where would be the check-in? And, and how, how will you guys anticipate this operating?
So currently at Sharkey's, it's self-serve. So when you walk in, any team member is going to come up to you and they're going to say, "Welcome to Sharkey's. Have you been here before?" "No, I haven't." "Here's a menu." You sit anywhere you want. You order up front. Whenever you're ready, we bring your food out to your table for you. They get a table bucket with like a surf sticker on it. They help themselves to the chips and salsa bar. And that system that we've had has worked amazing as long as every, all team members are doing what they're supposed to be. In this instance, if someone comes in, that's actually a really good question because I haven't thought about that yet. But either we're going to have the team members ask, are they going to stay inside Sharkey's or go into the Seoul area? And if they want to go into the Seoul area, it's full service. And, you know, you're going to get a waitress and, and all that stuff. And then it'll probably be self, that you seat yourself there too and first come, first served on those tables. But you, we have, that's actually a great question because we haven't thought, we haven't talked about.
But we'll probably have, you know, the person that maybe works the service bar will greet the people and, and seat them down. And then there'll be a waiter, waitress that'll go to the table just like any full-service restaurant.
So are they going to have to enter through the original Sharkey's establishment to get to the new restaurant?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's the reason for the door in between the two?
Yes.
And then the idea, I guess, what the conditions is, is that the door closes at the, when that, when that, when you're at 11:00, shuts off? And then that gets shut down? Is that how you guys envision it?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I have a quick security plan that, that I submitted to Wendy for her report. And I'll just read it real fast. Last call for food and drink at Seoul Room will be at 10:30 and will then close promptly at 11:00. At which point, all guests at Seoul Room will funnel into Sharkey's and exit through Sharkey's if they chose to, if they choose to leave. During this transition phase of 10:00 to 11:00 PM, as guests start to transfer from Seoul Room into Sharkey's, the manager on duty will hold the line if need be in order to ensure that Sharkey's capacity is on or under 141 occupants, which is 30, 30 or 35 below our, our occupant load, so that they can accommodate the 30 people from Seoul transferring into Sharkey's. We will have a head count at the front door of Sharkey's at all times as well as a separate head count for Seoul Room at all times. They're also all mic'd up so they can all communicate and they can tell each other how the whole process is going. Once Seoul Room closes and Sharkey's absorbs that crowd, the head count will never exceed 171. The door hosts will be in constant communication with each other and the manager on duty. And one of the code enforcement guys came down. We were supposed to meet again before the kind of, the shutdown. But I was showing him how fast in that area on, on the busy nights where you do have a line, like on Fridays and Saturdays. People filter in and out so fast because they're kind of going from place to place to place. They come, they have a couple of drinks, and then they go someplace else. You can drop 20 or 30 people within a matter of 10, 15 minutes. So the, the line on the busy nights is just, it's constantly moving.
OK, thank you.
Yes, Eric, comment?
So when we initially had you?
So when we initially had you guys give your presentation, there was mention that there was no room to move tables and chairs out of the Soul Room. So you wouldn't take issue then if we condition that, that no tables and chairs from Sharkies proper get moved into the Soul Room?
No problem.
Okay. And then on the smoking issue that I brought up when I first began my comments, do you mind if we condition that no smoking is allowed in the Soul Room?
Please do.
Okay, great. And just to hit on Commissioner Lowery's, the live music and dancing, that's not allowed, or that is allowed on the cities, but on your ABC license, is that allowed?
No, it's not.
And then the one, number 42, where it changes a little bit, says that 75% of the items must be provided up to a half an hour beyond closing. Is that, is that something you guys can do? What do you do right now? Like, what's your?
We've been doing that. We've been keeping the kitchen open late already, so.
Okay.
If that, we're fine with that condition.
And then lastly, you know, I don't take issue with you being Monday through Sunday, starting at 9:00 a.m., but I know that there are some that did on this initial discussion. So you do have a one-year review, so I think, I think that's something maybe staff, we can discuss when we come back in a year from now. Because I personally don't take an issue with 9:00, Monday through whenever, Sunday and holidays, because it's really not an issue. And I think Police Department can back me up that says that historically it is not an issue. But the discussions were pretty fruitful here in your effort, and I applaud you for making some changes here that allow you to have this. And the city, I think, is happy that you have done so. So when we come back in a year from now, staff could note that, and we can discuss that then.
We appreciate that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, let's proceed on. No, you've been rebuttling all along, so we'll skip that. We're going to close the hearing now, unless I see some other comments or phone calls. I have a question of staff at this point, before we go into motions. There's two parking stalls right in front of Sharkies on 21st Place. You had a graphic showing the elevation and they were drawn in. I watched that for a while today and the other day. I hate taking any parking out, but I wonder if those could be removed. They back right out into the traffic, and there's always a backup in either direction. You know the two. Could you show that on that graphic that shows the Soul remodel? It was early on in your presentation. I don't know if staff, if you guys have concern about that, or, I know, golden parking, but show us the rendering, please.
So as part of this project that wasn't included in our purview, as those are considered public parking spaces, so those are actually city parking spots.
I figure they were.
So perhaps it's something that we could bring up with Public Works to understand if there may be a solution.
Just a thought, when you look at the site plan, there are only two stalls that back into that main drive. And I watched somebody try to jerk their car around and get in there. It's just, I don't know. Commissioners, do you have any thoughts on that? Something that I've noticed is operational. Throw it out as a suggestion. Talk to traffic about it, that's all. All right. Close the hearing. Let's discuss.
Kenny, we do need to take public comment. We have not had members of the public given an opportunity to provide comment on this item.
All right, do we have any? No. Nobody in the other room, either. Last call, 1:00. Nobody calling, nobody standing. All right. Good enough? We're good? All right. Motion, let's discuss motion and condition changes. I heard a few in here.
Chair, I just have another question quickly for staff. Is that, are we still?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, the, all of the restaurants and bars that you noted earlier, do they have morning alcohol service as well during similar serving times?
There are several that do. For example, we have Charlie's Chili that opens early. We have Blue Beet that opens at 7:00 a.m. We have Stag that opens up at 6:00 a.m. So there's several businesses that open up very early in the morning.
And are they conditioned to also be allowed? I mean, is that, is that every day of the calendar year? Or, I'm just concerned, I guess, about specifically some of the big holidays. I know that this is something that the applicant has asked for. And I know we also have a big, in the past, had some problems during particularly 4th of July, and I'm guessing for this particular restaurant as well, like Cinco de Mayo. I just have some concerns about, you know, people getting out there super early, starting early, you know, for the police department in particular. You know, when people start drinking at those early hours, like I don't, I can see how, like a weekend brunch is not an issue, and people want to enjoy a drink with their brunch or whatever. But I just have concerns about these big holidays where, particularly during these summer months, where it's like, you know, they start early, they are going till whatever hour they can last to. And then, of course, these become problems for the police department.
In this case, we have conditioned the hours from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. with these additional restrictions, just because it was the only item that was really being intensified. So we wanted to be particularly careful with those. So in this case, the police department recommended that they were able to have alcohol service every day of the week. Planning decided to restrict that further. And then upon, you know, the request of the applicant, we have suggested to compromise and provide a few holidays in there. If there's any specific holidays that you're concerned about, we could eliminate those as they are all specifically listed, but we're open to any suggestions that you may have.
They're specifically called out?
Yes, each holiday. Since they weren't federal holidays such as Cinco de Mayo, we chose to list them all out.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that, but I feel like that's just going to cause more headaches, again, for those particular holidays that can be problematic in this area. Just trying to relieve the burden on our department.
Well, especially St. Patrick's Day, come on. I don't have a problem with these changes, frankly. That's my two cents. Yes?
Can I ask Police Department, Wendy, if could, could you just, maybe just, for Commissioner Kleiman, I want to give her the courtesy that, do we see these holidays in the morning hours causing? I get what she's saying, and I just want to make sure that we have some justification to allowing those times. And like I said, I'm willing to go Monday through Sunday, but, you know, since we have a year review, I'm willing to hold off on that. So I just, I just want to give her the police perspective, I guess.
Limiting the hours of alcohol consumption is always in a community's best interest, but the police department does not have a DUI or an alcohol consumption problem between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., which is what's proposed. I do value limiting hours of alcohol consumption at any time, though.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead. I was going to say, also, I know that we're, we're looking at bringing this back in here. My only thought on that is that that won't include them being fully operational with this new proposed setup during those summer months. We won't really get a good snapshot of, you know, these high-peak times where we're really looking at, you know, the biggest issues potentially.
I'll make a motion. I'm not quite there, Commissioner Kleiman, but I totally understand where you're coming from. So I'm willing to accept conditions to 42, 55, and then, as the applicant stated, no issues with creating additional conditions that would limit or prevent any tobacco products being used in the, in the Soul Room. And the not being able to store chairs or tables in the Soul Room as well as an additional condition, as the applicant agreed to. And I'm, I'm good with making a motion to adopt the resolution and the conditional use permit and the coastal development permit with those modifications.
All right, do we have a second, or do you want to discuss it any further?
Mr. Chair, if I might add one item here. I know we heard the concern about making sure we get a full summer season on the review. The condition that's here is number seven. It talks about reviewing it one year from the date of approval. I think it probably might be better said to be one year from the date of the operation commencing, so we see a full year of operations.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I was going to suggest the same thing.
I would offer that suggestion for your consideration.
I'm totally cool with that. Yeah, that's great. Thank you for getting that. I guess as long as the applicant's okay with that.
Just clarification, Eric. What was your condition on tobacco?
No smoking.
None at all allowed in the Soul Room.
All right, we have a second?
Just, I just have a question on tobacco use there. Is there currently an outdoor patio where people can smoke there, or do they have to exit the restaurant?
I didn't see a patio.
The Soul space has a few tables and chairs out, but those aren't actually permitted. So there are no openings where someone would be able to smoke currently in that Soul Grill space. They would have to go to the public area or the rear alley.
How about in the current Sharkies, as it's operating today? Is there an outdoor patio there?
There are two outdoor patios. One of them is very slender, so I think it would likely be difficult to smoke there. But I do believe you are allowed to smoke on the secondary patio. They may have policies in place that prohibit it, but I believe state law allows them to smoke there.
Good? All right, one more time. We have a second to the motion. The chair will second it, just to get this thing going. That's with the amendments that we made. Very good.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, Baja Sharkies, and good luck to you there. All right. Shifting gears, we're going to item number three. Just to open it up.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is item number three. This is the request to continue the Shell Service Station Car Wash Edition project to July 9th. We do need a vote to do that, and we would want to take any public comment on the request to continue.
Just the request to continue?
Yes.
All right. Then, has been any ex parte communication so far with the applicant on this one?
None.
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 None here?
Yes.
The Shell said yes, but it was when it came up before.
Well, no.
For this one, no.
Yeah, we all were here for that, almost all.
Yes, I've spoke with the applicant, and I've also spoke with residents in Big Canyon and the members of their association.
You've been busy. All right. Let's open the hearing on the request for continuance. Nobody over there in the community room? Once again, you can call in. Nobody's called in. Get that going. Nope, all right. Wait 40 seconds, and we'll move on. Now we can. We need a motion for continuance to the July 9th.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, let's. All right.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, now we are going to Fire Station, which is item number four, Fire Station Number Two, PA 2019-098, 2807 Newport Boulevard. Staff?
Good evening, Commissioners. Chelsea Krieger with the Planning Division. This application is for the replacement of Fire Station Number Two, which is on the Balboa Peninsula. It's to replace an existing station, so the old one would be decommissioned. It's a site development review, including a request for a height increase. That request for a height increase is why it's before you today at the planning commission level. If it weren't for that, it would qualify as a minor site development review, which is reviewed at the zoning administrator level. It's also a request for a coastal development permit because it is located in the coastal zone within the city's permit jurisdiction. I'm struggling. So here's a vicinity map to get you, give you some orientation. The project site, 2807 Newport Boulevard, is highlighted in red. Across the street on Newport Boulevard is where you'll find El Ranchito. The only property that shares a property line is a dry cleaner, and next to that is La Ventina's Pizza. On the left-hand side is some residential properties and a public parking lot. And if you went further in that direction, you'd get yourself to the beach. A little bit of background on Fire Station Number Two and the project site. The original Fire Station Number Two was built in 1953. In 1980, there was a major rehabilitation project of that station. At the project site, at 2807 Newport, McDonald's was established in 1994. In 2017, there was funding approved to replace the old aging station in 2018. So a little bit later, the McDonald's property, the 2807 Newport Boulevard, was purchased. And since that time, the replacement has been in planning and outreach stages. We do have some people here from Fire and from Public Works who can speak more to that if you'd like to hear about it. And in October 2019, the conceptual design was chosen by City Council. Some details about the project. It's, the fire station itself is two stories. It's a little over 7,000 square feet with also a little over 7,000 square feet of apparatus bays, which is essentially a garage for fire station equipment. There's 10 parking spaces on the site. Those are for staff, and they're behind a security gate, which I'll show you in a little bit. There's also a detached public restroom building. It's 147 square feet. Also a part of the project are restriping of some on-street parking. Some things are being reconfigured, so there will be a loss of 13 spaces and then a gain of 15. So ultimately, you're going to gain two on-street parking spaces. There's also a new proposed traffic signal, which is at the intersection of 28th Street and southbound Newport Boulevard. So here's the proposed site plan. I'm going to use the laser, though I imagine it's difficult for some of you to see. The apparatus bays open up onto 28th Street, so you have a curb cut there. You also have a curb cut on either side on Newport Boulevard, and that's for the private entrances through the security gates for those vehicles. I mentioned those 10 parking spaces, and the restroom is in the back-left corner. So you'll see it up here. Here's our first floor plan. So there's that large apparatus bay on the right that I mentioned. Further to the right, you'll see things like a workshop, equipment room, things like that. On the left, you have the main public entry. There's a lobby, offices, and some common spaces for people working in the station. The second floor, the second floor plan is primarily living area. You'll see bathrooms, dorms, a study area. So this is where the people who are working in that station will live when they're working. So here are some perspectives to really give you an idea of what the proposed fire station will look at. The first one on the top is the view from the intersection of 28th and southbound Newport Boulevard. And then the perspective on the bottom is from southbound Newport Boulevard. And that small building you're looking at, that's that proposed restroom, 147 square feet. There's also a flagpole and a lighthouse feature, which serves as a focal point of the corner. Two other views of the perspectives. The one at the top is when you're seeing, the one you're seeing there is 28th Street and northbound Newport Boulevard. So that's where the apparatus bays open up to. And then that perspective on the bottom, that's the view from And then that perspective on the bottom, that's the view from the rear of the building. So you have the security gates, you have the walls, you have some landscaping that's shown in there. So I did mention that the application included a request for a height increase. So the property is located in the CV, that's Commercial Visitor Serving Zoning District, and in that zoning district, the height limitation is 26 feet for flat roofs and 31 feet for sloped roofs. In this case, the applicant requests a height of 32 feet for flat roofs. So that's that white band at the top, that's the top of a parapet wall, which hides mechanical equipment, and a maximum height of 34 feet 10 inches for sloped roof portions, which is that lighthouse feature. This can be approved with a site development review, which is why it's before you here at the Planning Commission with findings that are included and detailed in the draft resolution for approval. I would like to point out that the site development review process allows for a request of up to 40 feet for sloped roofs. So while they are requesting an increase in height above the base height limitation, they are not requesting to max out the absolute most that they could do. So this is two more elevations, once again, showing that height, so you can see where the lighthouse feature kind of pokes out above the 32-foot parapet wall, which hides mechanical equipment. That lighthouse feature serves as a focal point of the corner, which I mentioned, which helps to alleviate some of these concerns about extra height. There's, you know, high-quality design, there's varied roof planes, there's metal awnings and features that all help to help the project blend in with the surroundings, or maybe not so much blend in as stand out in a positive way. The project also requests a small deviation from landscaping standards. One of the code requirements in our zoning code is that the parking areas that are adjacent to public streets have a five-foot strip of perimeter landscaping that separates the parking areas from the public streets. This is a standard that can be waived by the director, and is therefore included in this project, is one of the things that they're asking for. In this case, the project is unique in that it needs high level of security. This needs to be a secure facility, so there needs to be security gates and walls. Additionally, with large vehicles, fire engines, you need a lot of space in the back there for maneuverability and moving things around, so it's difficult to fit that five-foot perimeter landscaping in there. They do provide 1,820 square feet of landscape overall, though. Most of it is on the 28th Street frontage, which is where most people are going to be seeing it, and it will be all drought tolerant and meets all the other standards of the zoning code. So as I mentioned, it does require a coastal development permit. Findings around coastal development permits are primarily focused on public access and coastal views, so this project is not negatively influencing public access. In fact, it might be a positive in that you're gaining a couple of public parking spaces on the street. You'll gain two parking spaces. Additionally, that public restroom is there to primarily serve potentially beachgoers or anybody who's just a visitor to the area. As of now, the restroom may be open 24/7, but that can be changed and locked at different times. As far as coastal views go, there's no designated coastal views immediately adjacent to the site nor coastal view roads. However, it will be a general improvement to the coastal zone by replacing an old McDonald's and now a surface parking lot with a new Fire Station with high-quality design, and it'll be something good to look at. As far as the public improvements in the right-of-way, I did mention that some of the on-street parking will be changing. On the right-hand side, you'll see some red Xs, so you'll see five there. That's where existing on-street spaces will be eliminated. On the left, along 28th Street, you'll see some diagonal white lines. That's some restriping, so they're going to take existing parallel parking spaces, restripe them to be diagonal, and ultimately fit more parking spaces there, so that's where we get that net gain of two parking spaces. Additionally, you have that traffic signal showing in the intersection there. That's where the new proposed traffic signal would be located. On that note, staff's recommendation is that you conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to Class 32, and adopt resolutions for approval. I would like to point out that you've got some red lines related to this project. The Class 32 exemption determination was redlined to include the traffic signal. That traffic signal was not included originally in the project description, but it was analyzed by staff, and the addition of it does not change the outcome of the environmental determination. You also have a red line, including the traffic signal in the project descriptions and findings for the resolution, the draft resolution for approval. So that being said, I am available for questions. We also have Battalion Chief Nick Lucas here, as well as Public Works Engineer and Architect who can answer questions about the design of the project.
I will start. A good presentation, by the way. Couple of questions. Who maintains the restroom? Is that the Fire Department cleans it, or is that a custodial for the city?
It'll be maintained by the C...
Your name, please?
My name is Peter Towser, Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works. It'll be maintained by Public Works staff.
All right. And then while you're there, on the same topic, how do people get access to it? Put coins in, or?
Just bathroom.
It just opens in?
Open door, yeah. It'll be general neutrals, single-user bathrooms, two bathrooms there, ADA bathrooms, both of them.
All right. Thank you.
What time do the public restrooms at the beaches close? At the same time the beach does, I assume, at 10:00 PM? Give or take?
As far as I know, they're open 24/7. They do close them at certain times when there's been problems with them, or the police close them maybe once or twice a month, from what I understand. But right now, they're open 24/7. It's a council policy to open or close the bathrooms at different times. But these bathrooms, we are specifying, we'll have timed locks on them, so if we want to lock them, we can change the locking times on them, do whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Council would like.
Down the line here of staff, Mr. Wagon.
Spending my years on Balboa Island, so it'll be very similar to the restrooms at the Fire Station on Balboa Island, if I'm...
Yes.
Okay, yeah. And just from commentary, they seem like they've worked out well through the years, at least what I've seen, in terms of the people on the island.
Yeah, I think the nexus for those restrooms are more for the bar traffic than for anything else, and so keeping them open at least till, you know, the wee hours of the morning probably is a good idea.
Pardon me, what kind of hour?
No pun.
All right.
But I did, since it wasn't in our packet, did council discuss the signal when this item came before them to purchase the land?
Yeah, so City Council did approve the budget to include the traffic signal.
And is the signal red, yellow, green, or is it only triggered when the fire is necessary? The reason why is I used to live on the peninsula, and I know from experience that that area gets pretty gridlocked coming down, especially on holidays, but are we contributing to more traffic with the signal? I know you guys sync those things pretty well.
It'll be synced up with our traffic system that we have right now. We have a lot of, I spoke with our traffic division before I came to the meeting, and we have a lot of data for all of our traffic signals, especially along the peninsula. We've been collecting it for a long time, so it'll be in sync and modernized with the rest of the peninsula along that area. Everything should go as planned. For the Fire Station, they'll have a button when they get a call. They'll press, it's called an opticon, and they press a button, and the lights go for the firemen, so they can, you know, exit.
But in your discussions, you feel it's better to have the three colors versus just a triggered?
It'll be three-colored.
Because there is a lot of pedestrian traffic, so every time that a pedestrian goes there, yes, they should be stopping for them anyway, but does that delayed time when you go from, you know, red to green, waiting for that walk, cause significant traffic backup? I mean, I know you guys are the engineers, but you've never had that there before, so I'm just concerned.
It will add pedestrian safety at that location.
And I understand that.
Yeah, it'll add pedestrian safety. We're adding other amenities out there, too, to provide better access to the beach and to other locations out there, and part of that is that signal out there. Is that into...
But did you look into the red just strictly for fire's use and not for any other use?
Traffic would prefer to have all three out there.
Okay.
Because they have another signal on the other corner, and they want to be able to maintain both of them, and they use their, you know, the traffic system to monitor both.
And I think over the years, the peninsula has run really well with all of the additional infrastructure, especially at those, you know, choke points where the crab cooker kind of is. So I'm not questioning it, just since it's new to us.
It's new to this location, but it's not new to our traffic.
No, no, in our packet.
Yeah, yeah.
I had no idea a signal was going in until just now, so I just wanted to make sure that we were all...
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I might just add, I did have a conversation with Tony Bryan, the city's traffic engineer, this afternoon, and he specifically indicated that, you know, the benefit of a little bit of safety for the pedestrians, but he did evaluate this traffic signal as part of the overall review of the project, and he didn't have any concerns that it would impact the circulation on the peninsula there for traffic. So I just want to relay that conversation as well in support of what Mr. Towser had indicated.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no other questions. Ex parte communication with the applicant. I'll start. I spoke to Jim Campbell about this, had a couple of questions. The Deputy Community Development Director?
None.
None.
None. I spoke with staff and a lot of times about restrooms and mostly...
All right. We now have an open hearing, so... Questions of the applicant anymore? I didn't hear any? Let's open it up to the public.
Chair, getting members of the commission, this is Jim Mosher. First, I'd like to say the high-quality architecture facing the parking lot side didn't look all that attractive to me, but the comment I wanted to make is that one of the frustrating parts of commenting on the issues that come before you is the city's pervasive tendency to enact rules, and then when their application is inconvenient, to not change the rules, which is something the City Council has full power to do, but to ignore them and instead insist on forcing a square peg into a round hole. In this case, the round hole as a parcel is zoned for commercial uses, commercial, primarily serving visitors. The square peg is a Fire Station, which is neither commercial nor, I think, primarily intended to serve visitors. To get around these obvious inconsistencies, we have an unsigned and clearly erroneous 2017 Director's Determination allowing a use in a district where that use is not listed. Not only did the author of the determination ignore the words "commercial" and "primarily" and fail to identify the CV use that a Fire Station is equivalent to, which is something the code requires, but they acknowledged in Required Finding D, which is on page 24, that an unlisted use is not allowed if that use is allowed in some other district, and they identified a district in the peninsula where it is. They forgot the most obvious district in which Fire Stations which are allowed, which is the Public Facility Zoning District, PF. And the Fire Station clearly belongs in one of those, according to our code. And in those districts, by the way, it requires a minor use permit, which is something that has not come up here. In short, I think the neighbors who are writing in have a valid complaint that this Fire Station is not something you would expect on a CV-zoned parcel, and I believe the correct and only remedy is for the City Council to go through the public process of rezoning the parcel to Public Facility PF, which is what it should be. And during that public process, a significant consideration that will come up is whether the loss of this CV land at this location, which is a coastal access issue because it's visitor-serving, can be justified under the Coastal Act. I think it needs to be rezoned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Do we have, I don't see anybody else in the committee room. Do we have any calls coming in? Nobody? Quiet night. All right. Discussion about any of the comments we heard. Staff, do you want to address a couple of Mr. Mosher's comments on zoning and commercial use? I personally think this is a health and safety upgrade and much-needed, and it does help the tourism, you know, they... Nobody has a heart attack, clearly there.
Mr. Chair, yes, I would like to address that. The Director's Determination about the land use consistency was done by the Director and staff several years ago. The City Council reviewed that, so we respectfully disagree with Mr. Mosher's contention, and the City Council has also reviewed that information and feels that it is consistent with the general plan here, so we don't feel that there needs to be any kind of change in the general plan or the zoning for the property.
Eric?
I just had a question on staff on the current site of the Fire Department. What is the plan for that, or is there anything, as of discussed? I mean, can we replace what this is for that?
Currently, the Fire Station there on 32nd Street will remain in operation through construction, and the Kent City Council is considering what to do with that parcel, and that will be reviewed and decided at a later point, but there is no decision at this point.
And that could be swapped for this loss of, you know, as Mr. Mosher said, loss of area?
Potentially, that's an option.
That's not our problem. This is the Planning Commission. Thank you. How much on my left? Ms. Kleinman?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, and you may not have the statistic offhand, but generally, do we have an idea of how many calls for service are called on by this location or the existing location, and then kind of generally what percentage of those might be serving as Chair mentioned, you know, as somebody, a visitor, a beachgoer, a non-resident?
That's a great question. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission. My name is Nick Lucas. As far as that station, it's one of our busiest houses in the city. The medic unit there runs just over 3,000 calls a year, so it's just under 10 calls a day. The truck there runs about 1,400 calls a year, with the engine running about 2,700 calls a year. So the unique thing about that station is it serves not just the residents, it also serves the visitors, so we don't discriminate who calls 911, so we make sure we serve everyone. That is a unique area because they do have the area that's more the play area of the city with the bars, but we also have a lot of assisted living homes that are in that area, so we do run a lot of calls for full arrests, respiratory arrests, and those pretty acute medical emergencies. So that is one of the busier stations in the city.
Thank you. Do you know how, again, these are just general rough numbers or estimates, but how many of those average daily calls for service happen during the daytime hours versus, you know, the late evening hours in terms of addressing residents' concerns about noise during on weekful times of the day?
Yes, most of the calls happen during the daytime. Of course, there are some calls after night. On average, there might be two or three after 10:00 PM. Most calls, at least when it comes to full arrests or respiratory arrests, those acute emergencies, those happen around 6:00 AM. I know it's kind of a weird number, but 6:00 AM on. Most fires happen in between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, but of course, with our city, our city's pretty well protected. We don't have a big fire emergency here, as far as that goes.
Great, thank you so much.
Quick follow-up on that. How often do you take the big rig out? Give it a spin.
The big rig goes out pretty often. That is the busiest truck in our city, so pretty well-trained folks there, so that is the second piece of equipment that goes out when the engine has been called for service. So that runs about 1,400 to 1,500 calls a year.
Wow.
Out of that house.
Thank you. Mr. Wagon?
The boundaries of that station, I think it's at Sixth and East Bow. What are the boundaries coming up towards this station?
Towards this station from the wedge is 15th Street.
15th Street.
So 15th Street to the wedge is Station One's first-in area.
And then where is this new station's range beyond, up towards the hospital?
Well, it depends. The truck, basically their halfway point is Bayside Bridge, so they take all... The truck, basically their halfway point is Bayside Bridge, so they take all that west side of the city. But of course, they can respond anywhere. As far as the engine, the engine stays within that 15th Street all the way to industrial, if that makes sense to you. And then, of course, it weaves in and out of some of those Newport areas up to basically 17th Street as you go, as you start to travel east. And then Dover, basically that Dover neighborhood, that's just south of PCH, that's kind of where it ends there.
And when the council discussed this, there was no, this was a discussion about response time, because you're moving it a little bit closer to that other station, a little further down the peninsula. It really wasn't much of a time difference that you're losing out on, correct? I think it was pretty well-vetted during that council discussion.
That is correct. We try to stay in 90% of our calls that come, and we try to stay in under five and a half minutes. We basically moved the station .3 miles from where it is now. So it will have some effect on some of the travel, but just doing those studies from anywhere that first-in area is, because it goes up to Huntington, I didn't say that as we go west, it still stayed within, underneath our five and a half minutes 90% of the time.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, we had one down there.
Yeah, one question with respect to condition 21. It talks about noise. I wasn't sure if that was specific to sirens, but just curious, when trucks do leave, since there are houses that are adjacent to this, do you ever pull the trucks out on a silent mode, or are the sirens always going to be on when you leave the station?
I'm glad you asked that question, actually. We do use sirens when reasonably necessary to do so. So during those after-hours, we typically don't use the sirens. We always have the lights going because that's a vehicle code stipulation that we have to have a solid red, so it warns people that's in front of us. But typically, the sirens are used. One of the questions that came up from one of the residents was, hey, there's a lot of impact from the traffic there. Now they're going to be blaring their sirens and their horn with traffic stopped. But when traffic is stopped, and our opticom is not activating the lights to change green for us, we actually turn the sirens off and we just leave the lights running. So the sirens typically are used sparingly. We do have our department rules and regulations and standard operating procedures that have most of our responses being a code-two response, meaning it's no lights or sirens. We just follow the regular traffic laws. And so you just have the sound of the actual rig, you know, it's a diesel piece of apparatus, so that's the noise from that. Our code-three responses are, of course, anything that's acute. Someone having a heart attack, someone that's not breathing, we have a drowning, we have those type of emergencies. But for the most part, we will shut the sirens down at those late hours of the night. You know, anything after probably 9 o'clock, we use the siren very sparingly because we want to be, make sure that we're good neighbors.
Thank you.
The only other thing that happens in the morning is we have to do checks, and that's per DMV requirement. And we have to make sure that the sirens activate. But we've always been good neighbors in the past because most of our stations are surrounded by residents, and we typically won't make that noise, which is like a chirp, to make sure they work until probably 9 o'clock in the morning. But again, that's one of those things that we really try to be mindful of our neighbors and visitors of the city to not impact their day.
I believe that's our, those are our questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I might add to the discussion about noise, I know that we mentioned condition number 21 that talks about the community noise ordinance. I just wanted to highlight, the municipal code does exempt activities conducted on public property. So I think we need to be mindful that, you know, the municipal code itself exempts the noise coming from a public facility such as this. So I think, quite honestly, we could remove condition number 21. I know that may not be what the community might want to hear, because I know they're concerned about noise, but they're really primarily concerned about the sirens. And I think the information you got from County Chief Lucas really addresses that question.
Very good. All right. Seeing no other questions, I think we'll close the hearing and proceed on to recommendations. Motion for, if it's approval, it's finding California SEQA were exempt, and a resolution PC 2020-023 coastal development permit and site development review.
I'll make that motion, Chair.
All right. We have a motion, and now we need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Very good.
Mr., excuse me. Would that also include the deletion of condition number 21? Because I think, I think it might be important to allow the facility to operate consistent with the municipal code, which it doesn't allow for an exemption, and this would suggest that we would be complying with something we wouldn't have to. So I think it would be best just to eliminate condition 21.
I'll amend my motion to include the deletion of condition number 21.
I'll second that.
All right. Let's vote. All in favor?
The motion carries unanimously.
Curious, what's the timing on this? Start to finish? No. Very good. Thank you. Perfect. You'd be there for the Fourth of July. All right. Let's move on, please, to item, where are we? Item number five, zoning code and LCP amendments related to corrections, clarifications, and inconsistencies. Do I have a motion? Oh, sorry. It looks pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and give the presentation for Mr. Murillo. He's on vacation this week. So I do have a brief presentation I can go through, just so the public sees the changes that we're doing. We do consider these four areas of adjustment to the municipal code and to the LCP. As being fairly routine, we're just clarifying and correcting some issues. Real quickly, the four areas here on this chart, we're changing the minimum lot size exception in the LCP. We're making the LCP consistent with the zoning codes. There really is no policy change here. The overlay districts, we're also changing those. Currently, they are more restrictive, or limited to be more restrictive than the base zoning district, and we're allowing them to be more flexible, either more or less restrictive. We actually have both of those kinds of overlay zones currently. We're also changing noticing provisions for typical public hearings as well as code amendment processing. So I've got a detailed staff report. I've got additional slides that get into a little more detail here than what the summary is, and I'm happy to go through those if you would like. Again, we feel that these are pretty routine and in need of clarification. Now, we did have some comments from Mr. Mosher, and I appreciate those comments. We'll take those under advisement. We may make certain changes to help, maybe make the language a little tighter if necessary before we go to the city council. But again, we would like, have a public hearing on this item, and then a recommendation to, for approval to the city council this evening. Again, I can answer and go through the specifics if any one of these or all of them in more detail if you like.
All right. Why don't we, do you have questions of staff about this? If not, we'll go to public comment. Ex parte communication on this one?
None.
No.
No.
I spoke to Jim Campbell.
None.
Nope.
All right. Let's open the public hearing. We heard the presentation. Commission questioned the applicant. General public comments. I see Mr. Mosher.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Kitting, members of the commission. My name is Jim Mosher. I appreciate the staff, considering the comments I submitted in writing. I did not get a chance to, by your 5 o'clock deadline last night, to comment on the subdivision notation, which I am looking at page 139 of the packet, that shows the insertion of this comment that appears in the zoning code. It's being inserted into the implementation plan for the local coastal program. One of the, another frustration of commenting here is you often see things without seeing the full context that they're in. This is one of those cases. Let me back up slightly. First, I think there's a policy question that you might want to be considering as a planning commission. The note has to do with a right to subdivide certain properties back to their original configuration when they were first subdivided. You might wonder why it applies only to these particular residential zoning districts, why it would not apply as a policy matter to other kinds of properties. That's a beginning question. And then as to the details of the comment, if you saw this in context, the whole section of the implementation plan, I think you'd recognize both here and in the zoning code, this may seem a minor technicality, but the footnote is misplaced. As you can see here, it's a new footnote six, and it's going next to lot area. It actually, if you read it, it applies not just to lot area, but several other boxes. It belongs in a box up above this. And then, and there were some problems, I think, in transcribing it. It's referring to compliance with the subdivision provisions of Title 19 on the second line of the comment. Titles 19 is not really part of the local coastal program, so perhaps that should have been changed to Section 2130.25, which is the subdivision provisions of the local coastal program implementation plan. And similarly, at the very end of the note, it refers to needing an amendment to the general plan. That probably should have been changed to needing an amendment to the coastal land use plan. If you really wanted consistency with, between the zoning code and the implementation plan, I think staff should go to the trouble of actually numbering the footnotes the same way in both. You would have to, I cannot explain easily from the microphone, but they're not numbered the same way. This is footnote two in the zoning code, footnote six here. And then finally, in both of these, one of the real problematic substantive issues with this is the last sentence that says that the new subdivision
Go ahead and finish.
should not result in additional dwelling units beyond what the original underlying lots would allow. And it's unclear what that is trying to refer to, because most of the underlying lots were subdivided a very long time ago, and what was allowed on them was actually anything up until 1936, when the city first had a zoning code. So I'm not quite sure what it means by what was allowed on the original underlying lots. So perhaps the grammar needs to be tweaked a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Turn to staff on that. Is that anything we need to discuss?
Mr. Chair, Jim Campbell again. You know, what this footnote is, is basically a copy of what's in the zoning code right now. So we're trying to maintain consistency between the two chapters. So to the extent that there's lack of clarity here, as Mr. Mosher's indicating, you know, we're not adding any lack of clarity, if you will, by doing it this way. I think the intent of this is really to, you know, if there's a lot that was subdivided and allows for a single-family home, then you could, you could basically go back to that underlying lot configuration. And the reference to the general plan amendment is purposeful, because the general plan amendment doesn't allow subdivisions that increase intensity within a statistical area without doing a general plan amendment. Again, this was very purposeful language that was put into the code back in 2010, and it was inadvertently left out of the local coastal program. And so we're just simply trying to put that policy back into the coastal zone, which it inadvertently has been eliminated from. So, you know, we hadn't looked at changing this in any remarkable way, but I do appreciate Mr. Mosher's comments, and we could look to that. But, you know, in the end, this is just a simple way to make the two codes consistent with one another. We would like to get a recommendation to move forward with the policy, and if we might tweak this language between now and the city council, you know, to make it more clear, I think we can evaluate that and, but not change the policy going forward.
And you're referring to Mr. Mosher's memo?
Yes. And his comments this evening.
Pardon me?
I'm really referencing his comments this evening.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll close the hearing and look for a motion or unless there's discussion. Somebody jump in.
I'll jump in and make the motion to approve agenda item number five and all the recommendations.
All right.
I can second that.
Good. Spreading it around. All right. With that discussion on that, on the motion, are we ready to vote? Proceed.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. The hearing was closed. We're on item number six under staff and commission items. I'd like to make a comment prior to that. Congratulate Commissioner Elmore and Wiegand for being reappointed to our planning commission by the city council. You're in. All right. Motion for reconsideration. Hearing none. Number seven, community development director, request for matters which planning commission would like to see.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and do the director's report. So of the next city council meeting on June 23rd, we have the legal non-conforming sign abatement amendment going forward to the city council, and the commission saw that at a prior meeting recently. I also want to make an update. You know, on July 1st, we do have the housing element update advisory committee going forward. You know, Mr. Mosher made a comment earlier in the meeting about the status of the housing element update. I can say that we have a contract with the consultant. We've had our kickoff meetings. This meeting on July 1st, we fully anticipated it occurring as an in-person meeting, if you will. We hope to have the, the full committee in the chambers here, and then, if possible, have the public in the room, if not, in the, in the community chambers. But we do feel that that meeting will go forward. Mr. Mosher is correct. October is October, and we do hope to have a full and complete project description for the housing element update and the circulation update as that's going with it. With sufficient time to prepare the environmental impact report, and so we're very mindful of those, but we are kicking that off and moving it forward here. We do have a planning commission meeting coming up on July 9th. We've got five items on the agenda. One of them is the election of officers, so that'll be coming forward as well. And so you've got that updated in your packet. The last thing I wanted to note for the commission's information, many of you have seen Greg Ramirez come to the commission. Greg Ramirez is a staff member. He's been with the city almost 20 years. Tomorrow is his last day with the city. He's retiring. So Mr. Ramirez will not be coming back to the commission, unfortunately, and he will be, well, will be missed. And so, anyway, I just want to provide you that information as well, so.
He can come back on the 9th. We can send him off with a good farewell.
I'll ask him if he wants to come down. We'll see. But, you know, we've had a, I've had a long working relationship with Greg, almost 20, almost 20 years, actually. And, you know, he's a, he did a lot of work on the general plan update in 2006. He also, he and I were the principal authors of the zoning code with consultant assistance, and that was in, was adopted in 2010. So, you know, a lot of the work of the zoning code update, the codes that we're working with, Greg had a significant role in that effort. So, so he's really has shaped a lot of how we operate today. So I want to commend him for that, and he will be missed. I just wanted to share that with the commission.
Nice.
And that's it. That's all I have tonight.
All right. Anybody have a request for a vacation? Everybody's going to be here on the 9th. Okay? We're good. That's a wrap.